Is it still on your radar screen, or is it on your radar screen, I should say? I think a while back, I seen a little blue headlines of Bonner County wanting to add fifty to fifty-five dollars to taxes, you know, fifty dollars on a hundred thousand assessment.
Uh, yes, it's on my, it's on my radar.
So was there anything that you can relate that you heard about that?
Not here.
Probably made a point. Nothing's beneficial as far as like putting it on the ballot. They would go to a ballot, but they haven't made the decision yet. Deadline for the balloting is coming Monday. So by this coming Monday, that would have to be official.
So then it could be put out to the public to know about it so they could vote on it?
They would vote on it. Yes, no. Yes, it passes. It goes. No, it fails. It does not go.
Isn't there a?
It's not advisory.
Wasn't there a period of time to where the public has to be notified about it ahead of time so people can be appraised of it before it gets put on a ballot for them to vote on?
No, it's the regular election notice time. We can have ahead, a few days ahead. Whether anybody wants to run the public side of other things. Regular ballot, just like the school, I think. Right Cindy?
Right. I have no idea what you're talking about.
So, so Mike. I know that there's these state laws about the county's ability to increase taxes. There's work on tax thing.
You can increase it to zero. However, then we run into a legal problem where the state's like, the county is charged with some things like charged with sheriffing, charged with making droves. Which then would come out in your taxes. Because tort is unvia. So tort, they didn't, they haven't created a, although you have a three percent on everything else, tort is not heavy. That suit. It happened once in Ada County. It was the bottom of the three percent. But the, in Ada County, we're down. It's also worse than that three percent got to allow for this crazy high score.
You're talking about the three percent.
I'm talking about if we ever just make it sure that I know right, that there's nothing.
Do it back.
Or, yes. Keep from roasting.
I know, I actually realized.
What demands are as hard as being in order.
How are you?
Nice.
I get my record this time. Go ahead.
What are you looking at, Mel? You think you got a couple of minutes to spare or what? Don't come in till the last second. Milton's kind of turned into our problem child. Yeah.
He's our new punching bag.
Yeah, it's like, wow, Mel, what are you doing now? We see him way too much.
Hey Claire, what are you doing?
She's presenting.
Oh, are you really? Good. Get ready.
We were nice to you the first time, but.
It's gonna be open season, baby.
The gloves are off. That'll be nice.
She has to get a much meaner look to fill in for that one. She can do it. She has the technology. She is scared.
Yeah, you should have worn Kevlar this morning. Will be nice.
She's been taking all kinds of nose. Ready. RC, we've seen you two days in a row too.
Yeah.
We're getting to be like Milton can hardly get rid of you.
Hey, I think it's a great morning. Jeff's here and he's not here to pick me up, so it's a good day.
What time? What time?
Sheriff's Department's here. They're not here to pick me up either. It's a good day.
Well, I'm trying to think what I've gotten going on this.
Well, it's early.
Ready? Okay, it is now nine o'clock and it's time in our schedule for our weekly business meeting. I don't see Pastor York here, so Steve, would you mind opening this up there?
Father and Lord God, we just thank you for this country that we live in. We especially thank you for this county we live in. Best that you give us three wisdom, direction and guidance on decisions we make that it be what's right in your eyes and for the people, Lord God. Help us be the best commissioners that we can be. We just ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks to you. And you will follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I know you're new here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Sandy for allowing me to add a moment of levity. Okay. Steve?
Yes. No, maybe. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to add planning item number one. Planning and zoning time extension request amendment AM zero zero one six dash two zero. This addition is necessary due to timing.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
And I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, it's time for public comment. Anybody sign up? Anybody want to speak?
There he is.
Come to the microphone, please.
That mask ain't full enough. We nothing.
Well, I was hoping I was gonna follow somebody here, whatever.
You need some, you need some talking points, some ideas?
Yeah, it usually helps me, whatever. But, but I am going to throw out there a little dialogue this morning. Yesterday on the internet, as per a TV station in Boise, give me latitude on these numbers and such. I believe it's KTVB, whatever, channel seven. And he had some dialogue to remind us that March twenty-second that we just kind of came across was a milestone or a remembrance of a, a year ago of the pandemic. I'll call it the pandemic, I guess. Well, I was trying to find a more appropriate word, a more appropriate word for people to more associate with.
Fraud, force.
Uh, well, yeah. So this is what this news article is all about to the people that are naysayers, that he reminded us on this newscast that I listened to. That in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, whatever, that winter period or whatever in our history of Idaho, there was a hundred and one flu, the account flu deaths of twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. So he was just trying to juxtaposition between twenty, uh, and then that, he said that was a high year as per other years around it of a hundred and one. So he was just reminding us of what we just went through and the numbers that we now have.
Okay. Thanks for that update. Anyone else? RC, you look like you want to say something. Okay. Okay, seen none. Let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I would second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Question or comment, Doug? Yeah, go ahead.
Technologies eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Firewall maintenance. Garden bridges, summer truck tires, fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy.
Fifteen thousand eight seventy-six, sixty-eight. Go ahead.
Firewall maintenance.
We can't tell you anymore. We'd have to take you. It's IT stuff.
And I don't think he meant for.
And I understand that even though I'm not a tech person, but it's just interesting to me that this is not built into their budget.
It is built into their budget. That's why it's on the consent agenda.
Any other questions or comments? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next up, the clerk, Mike Rosedale.
The expensive guy.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Mike.
Commissioners, before you, I have claims batch number thirteen, the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents. Demand batch thirteen, the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents, totaling one million, three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, twenty-eight cents.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-one claims and demands in batch number thirteen, totaling one million, three hundred, four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment, Doug?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
Paterson, for the record, um, the, the demands are at a higher ratio than I'm used to seeing. Could you tell me why?
I will tell you that part of them are health insurance, but I will get you the list after, after class.
That doesn't help the other folks, but thank you.
Sorry. Okay, any other questions or comments? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Mike, number two.
Next, I have claims batch thirteen for EMS, an amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, and demand batch thirteen for EMS, an amount of forty thousand, eighty-seven dollars, totaling ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents for your book.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY twenty-one EMS claims and demands in batch number thirteen, totaling ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Question, Doug?
Patterson, again, for the record, same question, same reason.
Sure. And also normally on a regular day, I give you the list and the public has never had access to it anywhere. So I'm gonna give you the exact same information that I normally give you and the public will get the exact same information they always get.
There's no, nobody knows of any particular high thing for demands?
I don't know that.
I don't know if it was demands, but.
There is a, there is a, a demand forty thousand for EMS. Might know what that is.
I think it was, uh, state insurance fund. There was, yeah, both, both ours and EMS had big, big hits to the number for state insurance fund for our.
Workers' comp. Order forty thousand, eighty-seven dollars.
Thank you, I think.
Yep.
Okay, any other question?
Apparently we have to put insurance on them.
Well, it's workers' comp. We don't have to, but it's recommended.
Uh-oh.
Go ahead, Kevin. Step up to the mic, please.
And so some of the workers' comp and some of these insurances, do you tabulate them monthly or they, you tabulate them every six months for them to fit into?
That would be HR and risk.
It'd be what?
HR and risk. Our human resources for like the health insurance, those fees.
Well, I'm asking, do you do that every month, fit them in?
They're a bulk payment. I think it's twice a year.
Wait, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next before you, I have a destruction of records resolution. I think it's four weeks ago or so, but there are a lot more records that were not encompassed by that and we have to do this with specificity. I have an exhibit, actually statute thirty-four twelve specifies exactly what records in elections, uh, we have to hold for certain amounts of time. Um, I have on exhibit A, those that I have held for five years, those that I have held for two, that I have held for one, and those that I have held for more than sixty days past the appeal time. And all those records going from there back, uh, we need to dispose. We have lots of them. Pre-approval.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution two zero two one dash two nine that allows the elections office to dispose of the election records listed on exhibit A.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Maureen?
Maureen Patterson, for the record, I'm just wondering, I heard five years, two years, one years, and then was it less two? And was it this last election?
Five years, two years, one year, and then some. We have to keep sixty days past the expiration of an appeal time. So if somebody wanted to appeal their, the canvas results, uh, go back and recount, that kind of thing.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
So how do we determine which?
What's your name, sir?
Kevin Moore for the record.
Okay.
So how do we determine which ones are five-year, two-year?
By when they were created.
State statute.
The state statute.
This just follows state statute guideline.
That's thirty-four, two seventeen, if you want.
Anyone else? Josh, you have anything? Okay, good.
You woke him up.
It's Tuesday morning.
Talking to me?
Okay, seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Mike. Next up, our illustrious fair director. Illustrious. Try to be entertaining.
Try to be fair.
I will be fair. Good morning, board. Darcy Smith, Bonner County Fairgrounds, for the record. We have two items before you today. The first item is a resolution for appointment to the Bonner County Fair Board. We had two openings. One was due to a resignation of a member and another member's appointment had come to full term. She expressed interest in remaining on the board. For the member who resigned, we did advertise in the newspaper as well as on social media for that position. Applications were received, interviews were held. And before you, as a resolution requesting appointment and reappointment, the reappointment would be for Gail Curless and the appointment would be for Leah Blackwin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Leah Blackwin to the fair board and reappoint Gail Curless to the fair board as outlined in resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Question or comment? Seen none. Both good appointments, in my opinion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Go ahead, Darcy.
Thank you, board. Okay, the next item, item number two. This is in regards to the Bonner County Sportsman's Association Wildlife Education Building. It was a long one. So there is a, currently a wildlife education building on the fairgrounds. There, if there was previously a MOU, one cannot be found, um, in the historic records for the fairgrounds. So it was thought that it would be best practice to have one on record. Before you is a memorandum of understanding between the Sportsman's Association and Bonner County, Bonner County Fairgrounds. This will outline that if the education building were to ever lose funding, um, the, and no longer in existence, they can't afford to operate it, that building would just come right back to the fairgrounds to operate and maintain. Um, it also outlines that the control of maintenance for inside the building, um, that responsibility belongs to the Sportsman's Association. As far as the outside of the building, including doors, that responsibility will fall onto the fairgrounds. So, I think they're available if anybody wants to see it. And it has been reviewed by legal.
Chairman, based on.
I read that.
Before us, I moved to approve the MOU between Bonner County Fairgrounds and Bonner County Sportsman's Association Wildlife Education Building.
And I'll present it. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment?
Kevin Moore for the record. So this is a building that the sportsmen's built. They paid for the building. This is their building?
I cannot give you a definite answer on that unfortunately because that happened many, many years ago. I do not know if this was an existing building on the fairgrounds. However, it was more of a handshake deal between the Sportsman's Association and the fairground slash county in years past, but this is now the agreement. Any other building that is currently standing on the fairgrounds, whether it is the tractor clubs building, the wildlife building, um, four-H buildings, they all belong to the county. Um, they can be run inside the building based off of agreements and an understanding for whatever their purpose is. However, if it were to cease or end, that building does not belong to them. They cannot just do whatever they want. It belongs to the county.
So it sounds like you were saying there's numerous buildings out there that it belonged or being used by a variety of entities.
Oh, yeah.
So I guess back to this one then. So the electricity and such that they use whatever they are paying.
They do. However, it is very, very minimal. That building is not open every single day of the year. It's typically just open maybe a couple of weeks out of the year.
Have you been to the fair, Kevin? No, good. That's, that's a good start.
We always need volunteers.
Yeah, you should plan on coming out. School building's got all the wildlife and everything in it. They have live fish in there. They won't let you fish in it though. Trust me, I tried. Go ahead, Steve.
There you go.
Thanks.
Generally the way it works.
Not that old of them.
You could have just picked any year and no one would have been able to refute it. It was nineteen, it was June the twelfth in nineteen ninety-six. Yeah, no.
And you think he didn't?
Okay, any other question or comment? Seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Darcy. Let's go ahead and go to assistants. Kevin? We don't get to see Kevin much in these meetings, so it's always a pleasure to have Kevin in here. Does anybody know what Kevin does?
In a weird way.
We donate.
A very weird way. Kevin Rottenberger, County Assistance for the Record. Before you commissioners, is the annual, annual report for the Board of Community Guardians. Annual report states what their vision for the year was, what they did accomplish, how many wards they did have, how many members they have. They currently have seven members. One did resign last year. It is an all volunteer board. People can come and go anytime they want to since it is volunteer. That's their annual report that they are submitting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the Board of Community Guardian FY two thousand twenty annual report.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comments? Go ahead. You're already up. You're already moving.
Kevin Moore for the record. So is there like any brief sheet, a synopsis of like how many people that this is incorporated helping through the year?
They have seven wards currently in the county.
Why don't you give a short description on what they actually do?
So the community guardians step in when a family, when there is a person who is unable to take care of themselves either financially or medically. It's a recommendation usually from a physician that a board be appointed to take care of this person's needs. They do get appointed by the court as the ward or the guardian. Um, the board does work with family members if they're able to locate any to have that person be the guardian or the conservator or the family member. But the majority of people want nothing to do with their elderly parent who potentially has dementia. And so the board steps in, gets court appointed to either be the guardian or the, the conservator. Conservatives take care of the financial needs. Guardians are responsible for the medical needs of that person.
A little follow-up. Would you say that seven is a typical number that you see typically?
Uh, seven is about an average. On our count.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Maureen, you had something? Okay. Cheryl? Oh, do we have someone's got their hand up?
Yes, Jim Leedy, for the record. Uh, how long has the guardians been in service, helping people out? I know that in the case with the Shymeister incident where Darrell Wheeler stepped in to take over her finances, was the guardians around during that time? And if so, did they offer assistance at all?
I know, I know the guardians was in place prior to me being with the county and I've been here since two thousand and seven. The prior director of assistance was the liaison at that point for the community guardians and the board. So they were here prior to two thousand and seven. I don't know the, the incident you're speaking of.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Going, going, gone. Okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Kevin. EMS Chief Lindsay.
Morning, Serge.
Morning.
Need to move some money around. Need to move two hundred thousand from FY twenty twenty-one budget line nine 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 one eight dash nine three one zero, capital buildings to budget line nine 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 one eight dash nine three nine zero. Capital vehicles for an unanticipated ambulance replacement. This will be for the expansion we're looking at in Blanchard.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution twenty-one dash three one, authorizing clerk to move two hundred thousand dollars from nine 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 one eight dash nine three one zero, capital buildings to nine 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 one eight dash nine three nine zero, capital vehicles.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Question? Maureen, you gotta be quicker.
Probably the same, probably the same question. Though it's interesting to me, and I'm, again, we're relying, I guess, on our three commissioners to stay on top of these things. I think last week, whatever, we did a similar thing of four hundred thousand dollars or something like that, transferring some money or something like that to some buildings. I forget.
It wasn't in my department.
Yeah, it wasn't EMS. I'm trying to recall what that was. Will you give us a brief rundown of what you're actually, give us some more specifics?
So we're looking at EMS expansion to the Blanchard area, um, which is a really underserved portion of the county for EMS. Um, so we're in the process of working with, I don't know how much I'm gonna say, we're in the process of working with Stone Ridge, um, to put a station over there. to put a station over there and man it 24/7. So in order to do that, we need obviously an ambulance. Right now, we have four frontline ambulances that are in service. And this would put a fifth in service to cover that area over there.
Yeah, the demand in that area has, has increased dramatically. And one of the problems we have is we've been relying on Spirit Lake to serve only BLS. So if you're having a heart attack, that's an ALS. So then we have to pull a paramedic from Priest River, which becomes problematic because if you're having a heart attack, you don't want to wait, you know, 20 minutes, whatever it takes to get down there. So. Now, you have a question. I can see it formulated.
Doug Patterson for the record, 2K, that seems very light for an ambulance.
200.
200.
200,000.
Thank you. No, I understand.
It's still pretty light, but I think what we're doing is we're, aren't we?
Yeah, that's tires.
So, okay, hang on a second. What we're doing is, go ahead and tell what we're doing.
This is, this is not purchasing a brand new build ambulance. This is taking one of our old ones. This is called a remount where it saves us a ton of money, where we take the box off the back, put it on a new truck. They repaint it and everything, but it saves us from having to build the box and do all that. So.
We're able to reuse those boxes.
This would be one of our old blue and white ambulances getting remounted on a new chassis.
And last year, we bought five new ambulances, five new frontline ambulances because ours were wearing out. The chassis were not, it just weren't out. And that was one of the saving graces when you do buy the, that investment in that original box still can carry over. So.
You can remount them a bunch of times.
Nonetheless, this is not a full new ambulance of 200K. This is just a rebound of the box onto.
It's a truck and chassis and.
If you saw, if you get out and look at it, it looks like a brand new truck, but they're just using the metal from the old one, which saves on that cost, which is roughly like a 30 grand save.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Because I had heard some, that there had been a lot of pushback about Stone Ridge originally being created. How long has this been that they've been servicing?
What are we talking about servicing?
Spirit Lake.
We service.
Stone Ridge. No, you said that Spirit Lake originally.
Oh, it's in their fire district. So Cutney County covers that area.
But again, they don't run ALS service. They don't run a paramedic. All they do is run EMTs.
So how long has the agreement been in place for them to do that part of Bonner County? Is that what the question is? I don't know that I know that. As long as, as long as I can remember. So they have fire district inside of Bonner County and they also run an ambulance inside of Bonner County. Which, you know, it'd be nice to do it all ourselves.
Right.
It doesn't have anything to do with Stone Ridge and I have no idea.
That whole area down.
The whole southwest corner of the county.
Down in the southwest corner of the county that's, we considered underserved. It's not anything against Cutney County or Spirit Lake or any of those departments down there. It's, they don't have the same protocols that we have. They don't have the same levels. They don't offer the same level of service that we do. So this would be a higher level of service.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anybody out in TV land? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Redden Bridge, Matt.
Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Redden Bridge Department. First item today, it's that time of year again that we request your approval to advertise for bids for liquid asphalt. We use various grades of liquid asphalt for our annual chip sealing and by two minute surface treatment, pot hole patching, et cetera. Advertise for prices on those yet again.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this notice of advertisement for the 2021 liquid asphalt bid. I also move to authorize the board chairman to sign this administratively.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Question?
So it's time for my annual question of which of these. Grace's best retard, Fred. Yes.
HFE 150, every town.
Thank you.
Maureen, I'm gonna let Maureen go before you this time.
Maureen Patterson for the record. I was just wondering if there's been any changes. Have they been updating, you know, research that this one's better, this will work better this time or anything like that?
Yeah, in the last couple of years, we have gone through quite a bit of adjusting our specifications and trying to tighten those down on what really works for us. And it's always a learning curve. Every year is different. You have different sources of rock and the oil, depending on which manufacturer wins the bid, their mix is going to be a little bit different. And so it's always constantly changing.
Okay, Kevin.
More for the record. So we've got a couple here, so I'll see if I can get them out. We're in the bid process and so you're not throwing out any guestimates yet of what you're thinking you might have to expend to do this.
I can tell you what our budget line item is, $650,000.
Okay, I appreciate that. And hopefully you guys will give me some latitude again now.
Absolutely.
Because I was afraid of that. I should have brought this up when we first opened up meeting, whatever, in the opening questioning, but I'm gonna throw this out there. A while back, I seen a little blip on the news, I think off of Bonner County Daily Bee, I believe, but I don't even remember now. But it was something to the effect that you guys were opening up, and again, I'm trying to search for the right wording here, dialogue so the public could know that you were wanting to put a $50 to $55 per 100,000. Or I believe it was the road department. So can you tell me or the public what kind, where we stand on that?
Sure. With the increase in population, we've seen a big increase in damage to our gravel roads, mainly our collectors, the ones that where other roads, you know, feed into. That maintenance cost is already starting to be realized by road and bridge and it's stressing their budget to a point of breaking. So as we started looking at studies, we found that for every two miles of gravel surface road that's got high traffic counts, you know, 1,000, 1,500 cars a day, that we can save over a 20-year period about $280,000 for every two miles we do. So it seems like a prudent investment to go ahead and invest the money now while costs are less because we don't know where oil prices are going to go than to wait and try to do this later and, and increase taxes. Now, we had a couple of options. One, we could have gone with forgone, which no one likes, and just gotten it done, which raises your base tax level forever. Or we can do retiring levies, a series of retiring levies that are two years and then they're out, and then another two years and they're out until we can get these collectors done. Either way, it's going to cost. We can, we can kick the can down the road and pay a lot more later, or we can take care of it now.
With specifics as to what we're going to do in that two-year period, very specific.
Yeah, we've actually choked, identified roads. We did a complete road study years ago to identify roads, kept track of the maintenance records. So we know exactly which roads we're going to hit. We're going to do roads in each one of the districts in the county. And even we've even identified sub-districts to make sure that, that the, the work is spread evenly amongst the county. So.
So we're, you're saying, it sounds like then that you are immediately, wrong word again, you're going to try to make this happen?
We want to try to make it happen. Yeah, we think it's the most prudent way to go, especially from an economics and financial standpoint. It'll actually save taxpayers dollars down the road. So.
It'll be on the, hopefully in the May, yeah, election.
Yeah. And we're going to be doing some, some open house meetings in various areas around the county that you can come and ask questions specifically to it. So.
Doug Patterson for the record. So you were saying that, that doing the forgone tax thing was, I understand about the forgone tax thing and the 3% per year, but I do not know what part of the law precludes the county from reducing taxes, having raised them at some point.
Nothing. But typically what you'll find, the appetite for government is once they get that money, they will figure out a way to spend it. And the three of us aren't going to be in office forever, although it just seems like forever.
Just some of us, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so however, it seems that, that somehow it's going to be different in terms of reducing the taxes once we raise them to have a, a tax specifically put on for road and bridge that that.
These will be sunsetted levies. So they automatically have a sunset in it. Once they're done, they're gone.
Yeah.
If we rate, if we take forgone, it raises our base tax level. I know Mike's jumping to speak, I mean, it raises our tax level, base tax level forever. Now, future boards can choose to reduce taxes after that. But when have you ever seen that happen other than with us?
Well, I also don't see, I also don't see taxes for levies going down that, yeah, the time runs out for the levy that was passed, but they just put in another levy and continue it on. We've already got it in our budget.
You'll have an opportunity. No, this will be a, this will be a special set aside fund just for this work. It does not go into the general fund. And there'll be a series of two-year, there'll be a series of two-year levies. And once they're gone, they're gone. You get to vote again. So you're going to have an opportunity to vote on this in May. And then, and then the following, and then in two years, you'll have the opportunity to vote again.
Thank you.
Sure.
We're already getting chastised for point of order here.
Yeah, I just, we don't want to go too far down this.
Yeah, because it's interesting, our discussion here about taxes going up and down, because I think the Idaho legislature, we're just seeing right now, whatever, they're, they're trying to reimburse the citizenry.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks for that. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
So the one difference that Dan was pointing out is the taxable amount is forever higher. So the future Board of Commissioners can always bump it to that ceiling. Love it or hate that led the bond issue, whatever, that's going to be a one-off for two years or whatever it would be, and then it would expire as then we could all vote for it again or not vote for it again. If we take the forgone, that's a mark that's forever higher and that the future commissioners can always just run that pedal to the metal forever. That's the difference.
And that's what we're trying to avoid. Forgone to, to this board is a, is a bad word.
And thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mike. Either way, by the way, either way, the money's going to have to be spent. It's a matter of how we want to do it. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks. Sorry, Matt.
Forgot where we were.
Yeah, I got lost as well, so.
Okay, next item. We have a professional services agreement from David Evans and Associates for surveying the boundary of our gravel pit at down in Blanchard. We want to have pins put in and lates set along the boundaries so that we know with a lot of confidence where those boundaries are at. And as we're crushing rock out there, we do not exceed that at any time in the future. So. Professional services agreement is a not to exceed amount of $17,998.
All right, I move to approve the professional services agreement with David Evans and Associates for surveying the boundaries of the Blanchard pit for a not to exceed amount of $17,998 and zero cents.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments, Doug?
Doug Patterson, one more time again. This, this pit, is that surrounded by some type of government land or is it all private?
It's a mixture. There's private on the north side and government lands south of it.
Which government? Thank you.
Okay.
And on the top side, it's actually private timberland, one of the timber companies or it was anyway.
Kevin, more for the record. So it's kind of interesting. Is this exacerbated by the, our asphalt debacle that you guys are wanting to redetermine where the boundaries are with your Blanchard?
Not connected to that at all.
We've been trying to go to this for a month or better.
So it's a difference between us creating our own gravel or buying it from someone else? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
It's also time to advertise for bids for magnesium chloride. We use magnesium chloride for stabilization of our gravel roads every year. Most people know it as the dust abatement. And every year we buy about 4,000 tons and no different this year. Our budget for the 4,000 tons is $495,000 and that will treat about 400 miles of gravel roadway.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this notice of advertisement for the 2021 magnesium fluoride bid. I also move to authorize the board chairman to sign this administratively.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Question or comments? Pretty routine. We do it every year. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next up will be Treasurer, Cheryl Peel. Oh, really?
All right.
Sandra.
She got the training wheels on.
Oh, yeah. Well, she tried to sit down during the pledge. Sorry. I want to make sure we embarrass you a little bit.
Sandra Andrews, Chief Deputy Treasurer for the Treasurer's Office. We are seeking approval to destroy records as outlined in the Treasurer's Office Records Retention Policy, Resolution 15-76, passed by the B O C C on 9/22 of 2015.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-32, authorizing the county treasurer to destroy the attached documents as listed and outlined in the Treasurer's Retention Policy Resolution.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Now you. Okay, next up Sheriff's Department. Looks like it's going to be Cindy. Cindy Wright.
Cindy Wright, Lieutenant with the Bonner County Sheriff's Office. And I also am asking for a resolution to destroy Sheriff's Office and jail records in alignment with the retention schedule that we have.
Okay, thanks, Cindy.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-33, authorizing the Sheriff's Office to destroy the Sheriff's Office and jail records listed on exhibit A.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead, Maureen.
Maureen Patterson, just curious that, is it five-year, you know?
It's the five-year, the two-year, the one-year. We have a schedule that depending on the record.
Yeah, we have a, Jim, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, just kind of curious. What kind of records are they? And are they backed up on, in a database or are they permanently destroyed?
No, these are all paper records and they're accident reports, attendance accruals, bank records, civil worksheets, driver's license receipts, drug testing results, pass downs from the jail, jail classification, exercise logs, head count, inmate housing billings, inmate medical records, purchase orders, billing and receipts from the jail and public record requests.
There's also cell shakedown logs. What's a cell shake? When they go in to search the cell?
Yes, and what they find is.
So when they're destroyed, are they permanently gone or is there any way?
They are permanently gone.
Again, this is all part of state statutes. So I don't go 31871.
Okay, thank you.
Other question or comments? Did you have another one, Jim? No, you're done? Okay, great. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Hey, last but not least, a moment we've all been waiting for. Oh, we do?
We've got two pages today.
Oh, you're right. It's, sorry. It's the B O C C, our own Claire, Claire May.
That'd be nice.
Claire May.
We don't have to, but it could vote very well.
And before you today, I have a request for 62 parcels of real property to be annexed into the West Pondray Fire District. To give a little background of the process, it starts with a petition from the property owners. And then once the fire district receives that petition, petition, they must hold a public hearing for Idaho Code, which they did on February 2nd. It was determined to be in the best interest of the property owners. And so the fire district then issued an order approving the petition. And the next step is to bring it in front of you with the Board Accounting Commissioners. If this order of annexation is approved, then it will be recorded and go to the state of Idaho where eventually the annexed property can be added to the tax rolls.
I don't see a flaw there. Do you see any flaws there? I thought you did a pretty good job, yeah. I was trying to find something to hang a hat, hang my hat on, but I couldn't find it. Okay. Plus, it's my own personal self-interest. If I upset her, then my day is not going to go very well. Okay, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve order of annexation of 62 parcels of property located in Bonner County, Idaho into the West Pondray Fire District.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Question? Who's going first? Dave's already up.
Dave was.
Dave, and for the record, I, I mean, I'm all for this. What, where this is, is in the Freeman Lake area. And we've been providing quasi-service there without them paying, and it's really unfair for all the people that are paying. So this will clean, clean that up. So basically it'll clean up our district all the way to the Washington line and it'll be good, better service for these people and less burden on the other people that were paying for the service before. So thank you very much.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Maureen Patterson, just, I was just going to say how many acres. It says 62 parcels.
I've looked it up.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't have that information right on hand.
Yeah, if you need it, we can get it.
Yeah, we can find it.
Kevin, would you like to say something?
Kevin, more for the record. So anytime I hear the word annexation, it makes me. Kevin Moore for the record. So anytime I hear the word annexation, it makes me get a little loss, whatever. And this, so it's not really that people's boundaries are being changed. It's, it's usages of different services of them being incorporated. So this isn't anything where planning and zoning has to get involved as per annexing or changing of boundaries.
All they're doing is drawing a certain, drawing a line around a bunch of properties. It'll be paying taxes for this service. Okay, any other questions or comments? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Claire. Uh, planning is coming up. We have Mel back there. It's you.
Hope I can take a little bit of leeway.
The latitude.
Little, little latitude. Introduce Chad Chambers, new in our office.
Okay. Chad, stand up. Give us a little spin. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, man. Yeah, we're excited to have him on board, new planner. So the Planning Commission has requested the board allow additional time for review and recommendation of AM 1620 subdivision ordinance. So Title 12, 214 requires that the PNC Commission, when they have a text amendment, they, they have 10, after they have a hearing, they have 10 days to make a decision. And they're, they, they couldn't come to a conclusion on this recommendation on the subdivision ordinance. And so they would like some more time to review it. It's, their, their request is drafted in their memo to the board asking for that additional time. What they did is they continued their hearing to a date and time certain of April 1st at 5:30. So they're not asking for a lot of time. They're just asking to allow them to have that continued hearing and, and make a final recommendation on April 1st.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to send the Planning Commission a memo granting the request to allow the continuation of file AM 0016-20 to a date and time certain of April 1st, 2021 at 5:30 PM.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment?
Kevin Moore for the record. So whose district is this in?
Subdivision ordinance is the whole county.
Yeah.
I thought this was a specific.
One, two.
No, it doesn't have anything to do. It's an ordinance.
Okay, any other questions or comments? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mel. And with that, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess. It's 9:43. We'll see you back in five. Sure.
Hey, we're right behind you.